Reverend Angel Jackson, please open us up. All hands, please.
Thank you, and thank you on behalf of the North Canton Municipal Association. Let us pray. Holy God, we give you thanks for this beautiful day, for gathering us safely together, for the people in this room and the gifts you've given them and the way they use them to serve our community. And Lord, I ask that you give them wisdom and guidance, and that you help all of us to work for the good of all in the city where we live. We pray all this in your son's holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liam, will you please call roll?
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Holmes?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Peters?
Here.
Member Pleister?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve as presented the minutes from the August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five special city council? The minutes from the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five committee of the whole and city council meetings? The Price Park equipment purchase approval, the West Maple Street repaving contract award, the codification update to chapter seven oh seven, and the August twenty twenty-five financial report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We don't have anybody signed up for the recognition of the public at this time, so we will move on. Liam, will you please read the title of the amendment forty-four dash twenty-five?
A resolution authorizing the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation as the agency of the city of North Canton for industrial, commercial, distribution, and research development to facilitate the purchase and or disposition of property owned by the city of North Canton.
Uh, any other comments on this? We've talked about this, and this is the way we are going to move property. Jason or Gina, any other comments on this property here?
I'd have anything there.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the third reading of resolution forty-four dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Liam, will you please read the brief?
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from the officials of the DAS. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection of the premises.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chuck Osborne?
Chuck Osborne, three oh seven Bellevue Street, Southeast, North Canton, Ohio. Recent office holders on North Canton City Council have failed to comply with state statute requiring the taking of an oath of office before entering upon the discharge of their duties. More specifically, I am speaking of the fact that both president and vice president of the city council have not been sworn in and taken the oath of office for the office they now hold. Section two point oh three, paragraph three of the North Canton City Charter titled Officers of Council starts with President and Vice President of Council. And I quote, "By virtue of holding such offices," post quote. This language clearly identifies these positions as offices unto themselves. Section five point oh five, paragraph two of the city charter titled Vacancies describes the process of filling vacancies of offices on council, identifying the positions of councilperson as office of councilperson, quote, "the council president position as the office of president of council," post quote, and the council vice president position as the office of vice president. The city's charter recognizes that a councilperson, a president of council, and a vice president of council are distinct offices unto themselves with separate and distinct responsibilities and authority within their respective office as members of North Canton's much-later body. Given that the North Canton City Charter names the above described positions within council as offices, I call to your attention state statute, Ohio Revised Code, section three point two two, which reads in part as follows. Each person chosen or appointed to an office under the constitution or laws of this state, and each deputy or clerk of such officer shall take an oath of office before entering upon the discharge of his duties. With that said, when individuals fill any of the above charter-described offices, they are required to be sworn in and take the oath of office for the office they will hold. I have consulted three attorneys on this issue, and their legal opinion unequivocally is that newly seated council president Stephanie Warren and newly appointed vice president of council Dave Matheny are required to take an oath of office and be sworn in for the offices they now fill. This has not happened. I should add that failure to be sworn in and take the oath of office could very well cash down on the validity of their actions while acting in the capacity of their new office. The swearing in and taking of an oath is a requirement throughout local, state, and federal government. An example of this requirement can be found at the highest level of government when one looks back to the past. Although it was sixty-two years ago when President John F. Kennedy was lost to this country, I'm sure many of you saw the photos of Vice President Lyndon B. Johnson being sworn in aboard Air Force One in Love Field, Dallas, Texas, as this country's thirty-sixth president of the United States on that fateful day, November twenty-second, nineteen sixty-three. Previously, Lyndon Johnson had spent sworn in as vice president on January twentieth, nineteen sixty-one, at the U.S. Capitol in Washington, D.C. Lastly, I would like to correct remarks made by a large council member Christine Wierich at the August eighteenth, twenty-five council meeting during council reports. At one dot twenty, dot twenty-five, I posted video of the meeting. Mrs. Wierich stated that Stephanie Warren was council's first female president of council. Mrs. Wierich's attribution that newly ascended president of council Warren was council's first female president of council is incorrect. For the record, former council member Marcia Keesling was council's first female president of council, but only very briefly. As council president is as Keesling's first and only official act after very first and only meeting, a special council meeting held on March fourth, twenty fourteen, was to step down as president of council. Mrs. Warren, you were in attendance at that March fourth, twenty fourteen meeting of council as a member of council. You should have recalled that Mrs. Wierich's attribution on your behalf was unwanted, yet you failed to speak up and correct Mrs. Wierich's assertion to the record. In conclusion, office holders are required to be sworn in and take the oath of office for the office they will hold. The record of this action should be maintained to document compliance with the law. And now, we got a few seconds. I will also say at that March fourth, twenty fourteen meeting, Mayor Hill called an organizational meeting. I have spoken to Mr. Otten, council clerk on this. He seems to have fixated in his mind that you only have an organizational meeting on December first to start a new term of council. Mr. Mayor Hill's, former Mayor Hill's actions show that that's not true. You can have an organizational meeting when you have a change in hierarchy if you're on council. Thank you. Pointing, I'm just to stay up here if you have questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Do we have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Bachman?
Dear Mr. Bachman, three two zero Weber, Anthony. Here tonight, the F three put into the twenty twenty-one twenty-six budget sidewalks increased on one side of Seventh Street. The neighborhoods of Seventh Street, Sutton, Prior, River, Winston, and East Bay are all changing the families where they live and there's a lot of kids. The new middle school is being built on Seventh Street. Middle school had nine hundred students. None of them, none of them dropped. And they all live in our neighborhoods, but a lot of them, they'll be within this two mile area that's a half a block from us. Now, they still have twelve hundred students. That's a two, uh, twenty-one hundred. North Canton students on Seventh Street. We also have the stadium, soccer fields, the pool, Dogwood Park, and the new handicap park, which, uh, people go to that. The other day, I was driving up Seventh Street, I saw a baby pulling a wagon with a small child in it. She was on the grass. She wanted to be in the street, but she didn't want to. She had to pull the wagon through the grass with her. So please consider putting a sidewalk on the area for one side of the street, including Woodside and Winston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. And last, Mr. Davis.
Brad Davis, sixteen seventy-eight Meadow Lane Drive, southeast. The mayor, the administration, and city council, I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to your quick response and reference to the plumbing permit for Elvers Body Shop. Your continued attention to this matter is commendable and greatly valued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had some good news for you.
Yeah, I must. I think it was pretty much handled right after the meeting.
Quickly.
Oh, it was quickly. Yes. Okay. Well, that did it for our speakers for tonight. Under general topics, we will now move on to department reports. Mayor Stroya?
All right. Hey, I'm not used to going first. I want to say thank you to Brad, Chuck, and Liam for speaking. The only thing I wanted to say tonight is, uh, thank you to Jeff for agreeing to be appointed. That was, uh, very important. Heck. And I appreciate your willingness to, to serve. Sorry, I didn't get to play the entrance music when you came on. That's all, I guess.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Thank you. Um, I guess I will, going off a little more detail on that from what Brad said, and we did work on that quickly. Uh, as you recall, the, the issue at point was, um, the permit and what the cost of that permit was for a bathroom in, in commercial, um, the error that was found, because it did seem quite large, right, when the amount was? Uh, the contractor had put in the entire square footage of the project instead of just the, uh, square footage of, you know, the prod, part that they were working on. So the difference was, um, ten thousand eight hundred square foot, or the quick square footage was eight hundred and eighty. So there was, they originally said one thousand seven hundred fifty-five, which we were all shocked, like that did seem like a very high amount for that, you know, small project there. Um, it was a refund of one thousand three hundred and twenty-eight, twenty-nine. The fee was just four twenty-six, eighty-three. So, you know, as you know, we've looked into these fees a lot. We've looked at other communities. We've, we've, the larger comparable. Yes, some are higher, some are lower, but this is, this, you know, it is more in line, so. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, just that everyone had come out to the Parks and Rec master plan that we held at a Dogwood. We had a good turnout to that. People have been asking a lot since then if they weren't able to make it out. There will be other opportunities. Uh, we'll be out at community events. Uh, they'll be out, uh, September twentieth at the seven twenty market. They'll be out seven twen- on, um, September twenty-fifth, the senior programming that the library has here at the civic center. They'll be there. Uh, there will also be, uh, at the New Berlin Fest, which is on Saturday, September twenty-seventh. Probably another Dogwood event. We're trying to, to get, uh, look at a best time. This was an evening after work, five to seven. It's hard. I know people are coming up from work. Kids are back in school activities. So when I do it on a Saturday or a Sunday, um, we're also going to be at the farmer's market, probably, you know, some opportunity there. Um, Sue brought up a good point, like where do you find the survey? We've been pushing it out via the text, the website, Facebook. You can find it on the city website also. If you just do a search, just put in their master plan, uh, park master plan. It'll take you to the link, uh, to take a survey. There's also paper copies of the survey available at City Hall, somewhere at the library, and we're trying to get some other locations. Um, so just trying to get that data out. The survey does end at the end of September, so got this month to get it in, make your voice heard. This is a long-range strategic plan to guide the North Canton Parks and Recreation Department into the future for a decade. So this is your time now. If not now, then, you know, down the road, it'll be like, well, there was your opportunity to have your voice heard and get some input. Uh, also want to give, uh, update on Woodrow, Jenny and your ward. Uh, you know, they're finishing up. Winger's got everything finished up. Um, I know some residents haven't been happy with some of the, the seating and the grass that's grown, so they're still working on that. Um, but the Woodrow trees, uh, that Rice's will be planting are coming in October thirteenth, give or take a few days. They are being, um, you know, they'll be, you know, dug up from where they are growing now and transported on October first. So, you know, he's, might be able to move it up a few days, but that's shooting for around October thirteenth. Um, they'll try to get the seating done, and of course, as you know, if, if anything isn't to our North Canton satisfaction, we will have them redo it, you know. Before we release the bond.
Thank you for being receptive to the comments and concerns that have, uh, helped us.
And, uh, also in parks, just wanted to tell you, Brian, uh, Brian Hill Superintendent Parks is moving along still with the project. Uh, two things. The one you approved tonight is an updated, uh, playground equipment at Price. That's over twenty years old over there, and it's really running into safety issues, so we were able to, um, utilize, uh, with Resource Well, going with Snyder Recreation. We've used them before. Um, so that's happening as, as well as what Brian is going to be, um, starting is with, uh, the capital award money we received, redoing the gazebo, the fishing gazebo, and then improving accessibility there, um, with concrete and putting, uh, some improved seating, some improved lighting. Um, so it's going to be a real refresh happening this fall over at Price Park. I think that's all I have then.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Director?
Yeah, I'll, maybe building on some of the things that Catherine said. Uh, on the planning theme, I wanted to share that we've had some discussions with the North Canton City Schools and, um, to build also on the thoughtful comments that we had about the sidewalks on Seventh Street. Uh, the schools are getting ready to embark on, uh, the creation of a safe routes to school travel plan. And so basically, the purpose of that plan, as the name implies, is to look at ways to make it uh, safer for students to walk and bike to all the schools. Um, typically, those plans are something that's very common in cities throughout Ohio, and they have a linkage to funding, which I'll explain in a second. Uh, but the, the plans typically look at what's called the three E's. So they look at, uh, enforcement, education, and maybe most remaining to the sidewalks, engineering. So kind of a multifaceted approach of looking, how can we get students to school more safely? Whether that's, uh, enforcement, whether that's educating them about safe crossing the streets and so forth. But the engineering component is large, and that's looking specifically at sidewalks, crosswalks, other types of infrastructure, uh, improvements. And as you can all imagine, the new middle school, of course, looms large and, uh, the discussion about the safe routes and how to get students safely to the new middle school. So, um, as far as the process goes, I know the schools will be doing public engagement throughout the fall on that plan with students and residents. Uh, the deadline for creating that plan is in February. And maybe to the most important part for our purpose is the funding. ODOT, um, the Ohio Department of Transportation, these safe routes to school plans are, are, uh, a recognized component of their funding. And so, uh, school systems often create them. They're a prerequisite for getting funding from ODOT. And the nice thing about the Safe Routes to School program is ODOT provides funds at a hundred percent. So if there were an application put forward, March would be the time to apply to ODOT for infrastructural projects, something like the sidewalks or other infrastructure that's identified in that plan could be applied for. Uh, and so it is a nice program. I'm sure we'll be working with the schools. It is the school's plan, but we and, you know, many others throughout the community will partner with them. So I'd encourage you to reach out to the schools if you do have more questions on that. Um, but we'll, we'll be present at their meetings and engaged, of course.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Anything else?
I know, that was it.
All right, thank you. Okay. Director of Finance?
I have no report. The finance department has been doing work on the budget.
Yeah, yes. You have started, um, ha- having set up meetings for all of us. We're all going to be meeting with you in the coming weeks, and so you will have center stage as we move forward these next months. Thank you. Council clerk?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, moving on. Ward one, Gina?
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I don't know that I really have a report this evening. I certainly want to thank those who got up and spoke, uh, you know, before council. Miriam bring comments. And while it's not my ward, I think we can make it happen through things Jason was suggesting over there. Maybe you'll win, win for sure, so. Um, thank you to Catherine for some of the things that we've talked about over there in Woodrow. Already mentioned that, so thank you for your help there. And, um, welcome to, uh, former council president Peters for the next couple, couple of months. Looking forward to sitting next to you, so welcome back. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Matheny?
No report.
So, Liz?
I just want to say thank you to Catherine and Liam and a bunch of people from administration for helping a resident in my ward with an issue that she was having, and they spent a lot of time looking into it for her, and I think they're going to be able to help her out, so I appreciate it.
That's all.
All right. Mr. Orr?
Okay, thank you. Um, welcome. Welcome, uh, thank you to all that came tonight, those who spoke. I've been out and about the community. One thing I would like for us to keep our eyes on. Traffic is a mess over by Ryder, Indiania, Applewood, and more. Something, I think something needed to be done right after Chick-fil-A opens for the fourth. I don't know what we've done out there. I don't think it's working. And I was out there sitting in the parking lot, my wife was admiring it. And then I, it's kind of confusing in there, and it's, it's, do I go to Wendy's this way or do I go to Papa Bear's this way? But I really think that the volume of traffic is a lot. So I don't know what we can do, or what, uh, what the power should be. I've got a lot of complaints from people in my ward, which is far enough away from, but I think we should get into that. Most people in the ward are happy. Um, they're happy. I got several compliments, and I think a couple of people were going to write about our last issue of North Canton. It was very informative and very nice. And I want to thank most of council. Was it the Parks, uh, the master plan? That was very interesting again, and I plan on going to the other ones and, um, that's my report. Thank you.
You ready?
Sure.
Your notes? Cheers, Matt, Mark.
Madam President, thank you. I just want to thank, uh, Mayor Stroya, uh, for confidence. Yeah, it's only a pretty short time, right? This is it. But I did want to mention, Miriam, thank you for your comments on that sidewalk. We tried to tackle this a couple of different times by tenure, and I wanted to ask Jason a couple of questions. The fu- the funding, ODOT, is that built into the grant that North Canton City Schools have, or is that?
So it's separate. There's, um, there's the project to actually do the safe routes plan, but then there's also an application process that the applications are due in March of twenty-six to apply for infrastructure funding. So the plan would be a prerequisite to apply for those funds. Uh, but if you have created a plan that ODOT approves and, uh, it recommends a project in there. So for example, if the sidewalks were recommended, um, they, those projects usually do pretty well around the state. They, they provide, I can't remember the dollar amount offhand, but it's a fairly significant funding program for ODOT. I'd say in any given year, maybe they award twenty to twenty-five projects, if I recall, so. Uh, now, it's a big state, but, but I think we would be well positioned perhaps to receive funding.
I would, I would agree with that. The only question I would have is, I think, like I said, we tackled, tried to tackle this a couple of different times. And what, what basically stopped it was there was a couple of residents that refused to allow access across.
Four?
There's four.
Four?
Okay. We're, yeah. Working on it now? Yeah. Okay. Not very successfully, but. So I guess my question at that point is, you know, we're talking about the program that's about safety for kids to get to from school. Would there be an eminent domain component to that? Obviously, that would be city doing that on behalf of ODOT, or would they do that?
I think typically the way it works in cities, and I'm not as familiar with what, uh, we've done in the past, I can get up to speed on that. But, um, typically for these types of projects, I mean, right-of-way is a eligible cost. So if you do need to secure right-of-way for sidewalks, or it could be a typical roadway project, um, you know, that's typically done through trying to get voluntary, uh, acquisition first. But, um, with ODOT's program, if eminent dom- domain were used, that is a way sometimes cities wire the right-of-way as well. So in order to be considered for the funding, you would have to have access to it. So if you don't get the folks that have been saying that they don't want to do it in the funding or the, the grant request or a funding request, would you have to put in there, would we have to put in there that we're willing to do eminent domains? I think if the, if a project were applied for, typically what a city would do is they would say that right-of-way is required, and a funding application to ODOT, it doesn't necessarily get into the process by which the right-of-way is required. If you would just estimate a dollar amount for the right-of-way, and it, it would take into account whether that right-of-way might be required voluntarily or through, through an eminent domain process. So I think the key would just be budgeting the appropriate amount for it.
I was working with Ben Young prior to this, and I think with maybe a face-to-face, just talking to those individuals is the next step involved. I was planning on knocking on some doors, and I guess I kind of got with Ben's lap, so I'll go pick up that ball and talk to him.
And Jeff, on your, uh, to your point, but several years ago, I mean, I think everyone's recognized, you know, the demographic's going to change considerably when the middle school gets there. You're going to have kids walking either on the side or on the path to the grass in your yard.
That's not bad.
Yeah, it's going to be a high volume. I just want to make one point of clarification, Jeff. I heard you say the grant the school has, they don't have it yet. They, Jason mentioned that it's due, um, you know, come in spring. They have to do a plan first, and they had to, um, acquire a consultant to help them with that plan, and I believe they selected a consultant.
Correct.
So they have, they've got that process started, but the consultant will help them write, put the plan together to apply for the grant. So they don't have it yet.
Right, I might not have clarified that enough. Yeah, Catherine's exactly right. They are hiring, they have hired a consultant to do the plan, and the plan is the first step to apply for a grant, that if they get it, it would be a hundred percent dollars from ODOT.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Warren?
No report.
Wow, you had such a big night the other night.
At the, well, Catherine talked about that.
I did give all the details.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you to everyone who came out to Dogwood. Still twenty-one days to get your survey in, um, for the Parks Master Plan, but yeah.
It was good. It was fun to see everybody. All right, so, well, thank you for having that, and thank you for your videos, um, before. I was, I was fortunate to just talk with some members from Ward Two, so they have a group that is meeting and just wants to be more kind of in the know about different things happening in city government. And one of the questions was, how do we reach residents to let them know about? And I had to laugh a little bit because I said, well, you have to do videos. You have to watch a lot more. You have to have, um, equipment from Stark Parks and games and different things, and, um, people have to pay attention. And so while we're going through some of these things with the budget and with the parks, it is important to, uh, read your bills and see if there's any information on that. Make sure, you know, somebody commented about the sun and the great information in the sun. And, um, it is of citizens, you have to kind of take some ownership in that and sign up for our Facebook posts. Reach out to us as, as individuals, um, to get information. Um, everything in finance is all there. It's as transparent as you can have it. But, uh, the others should kind of have to go looking for you. You might miss some things. Uh, but thank you for doing that. It was after seeing those consultants, uh, I feel like we picked a great group. And all they want is feedback. They want to know truly what you want for the city park, so. Um, thank you for that. I, I don't think I have anything else to say. Kind of like you said, Matt, the end, everybody has said it, and I won't waste anyone's time. So with that being said, uh, final call for new business? All right, C nine? All right, C nine. The meeting's calendar will have a committee of the whole next week. We'll have council on the September twenty-sixth, and then a committee meeting on October sixth with no meeting on the fifth Monday.
Council on the twenty-second, yeah?
Did you say twenty-second?
Twenty-sixth, maybe you said.
That was like twenty-nine. No meeting. October sixth, the committee of the whole. All right. All right, that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, John, all in favor?